Are you guys on track?
Being 6:00 PM on Monday, May 6th, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Winuski City Council. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Hal Colston.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, next item on the agenda is agenda review. This is an opportunity for anyone to request a shift. Alright, we will move on. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is time for any member of the public who wants to speak about an issue not included in the agenda to come forward. Sure.
They're on the agenda.
Yeah, you're on the agenda, so you can wait until the chicken permit comes up. Please, by all means, please introduce yourself. Oh, and if you're not aware, there is a copy of the agenda in the podium in the back and a guestbook where you can sign in.
Got a question?
Yeah, I got a question.
Can you wait because we already gave him the floor first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Stealthy.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is James Ellers. I'm the Director of Citizens Against Nuclear Bombers in Vermont. I also made the long commute up the hill from Canal Street, being a resident here in Winuski. I have here, and should I walk them over to you now?
You can have. I think, is this about the resolution that was emailed to us?
So, this is a one-third. This is a House resolution with which Councilman Colston is familiar. Calling on our delegation and the Governor to oppose the basing of any nuclear weapon delivery systems here in Vermont. There is a similar resolution going before the South Burlington City Council tonight. And there is a committee hearing in Senate Government Operations tomorrow at 1:30, taking up SR-5, which is an identical version of this on the Senate side. We're still waiting to hear from the Chairman of the House General Committee as to whether we'll be granted a hearing there. But the request I'm here to make of you tonight is for you folks to consider putting forward a similar resolution here on behalf of the citizens of Winuski.
Thank you. So, we had been emailed this resolution by two other residents, I think, so far. And we're considering...
That's it.
What's that?
I said, "That's it."
So far. And Jesse and I were discussing including it on our next meeting agenda along with a broader discussion about the airport for the council. Do you want to elaborate a little bit, Jesse?
Sure. Well, I think perhaps one of the things that has spurred this on is the upcoming location of the F-35s here at the Burlington International Airport. And there's a lot of history about that in Winuski and action that the previous councils have taken related to the F-35s and generally speaking, our involvement with the airport. As you'll hear me talk about later on, we have been told that the noise exposure map, which is the map, the sound map that outlines the impacts on our community, will be released at the end of the month. So, the mayor and I have been working with them on some public meetings, both at the airport and here in Winuski, to share that information with the community. So, in advance of those meetings, the mayor and I had talked about your next council meeting having a broader briefing on the history of the city council and the city's efforts with the airport and with the Air National Guard. And then, I think, you know, a consideration of this resolution at that time would also be appropriate.
Thank you.
We'd be most grateful.
Is there any other context you want to share or just asking for consideration?
Absolutely, please. And we'd be most grateful for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have right now, if you'd like.
Well, I would limit that because if we're going to take it up at the next session, that's when we should really dig in, but...
Excellent.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming in today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Alright, I think we have some more public comment ready to go.
Yeah, not related to that at all.
Yes.
Burning permits in the city of Winuski. A lot of residents, I guess, have asked for them and in the past they get them for, I don't know how much they're charged for it. But I think we should recall all of them. And the reason is, in a neighborhood like I live, near St. Mike's, people burn anything they want when they have a burning permit, whether they have a pit or not. They burn, you know, wood, you know, pressure-treated wood. They burn stuff that they shouldn't burn, that they should dispose it properly. And a lot of people in the neighborhood don't have central air conditioning. Big surprise. So, what happens when somebody burns something in their pile, in their pit, whatever, it goes through the neighborhood and everybody has to close their windows in the middle of summer. And we're sick of it. So, all the people that do have permits, because I've called the cops a couple of times, and the guy that used to live across the street, and the cops are going, "Oh, well, he's got a pit." I don't care if he has a pit because he's burning stuff. You don't see that, or policeman doesn't see it because it's already gone and cleaned up by the time they show up. So, I think we should have permits. The houses are this close together. And if a fire starts and it happens to catch in a tree, which is always lots of trees in the neighborhood, and another house catches on fire, guess whose responsibility or problem that is? It's yours. It's not the guy that did it. It's the city that gave him the permit to burn. So, I think you should eliminate all burning permits in the city of Winuski. We're at the residential area. I don't care what the businesses do. Okay?
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
We have staff here to consider that. Potentially lead to a further discussion down the road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Look forward to it.
Any other items for public comment, for items not on the agenda? Alright, next item on the agenda then is the consent agenda. We have three items for approval here. First are the city council and liquor control minutes of April 15, 2019. Any questions or concerns about those minutes? I would entertain a motion to... Oh, any questions or concerns for the public about the minutes? I would entertain a motion to approve the city council and liquor control minutes of April 15, 2019.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Amy, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, approval of payroll warrant for period April 7 to April 20 of 2019. Warrant ending May 3, 2019, and subsequent to payout for February and March. Any questions or concerns about this item? Anything from the public? I would entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant for period April 7 to 20, 2019. Warrant ending May 3, 2019, and subsequent to payout for February and March.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The last item for consent agenda is approval of Headworks Phase III SRF loan agreement. This is part of a project that has been approved, was voted on two town meetings ago, and has gone through a couple of approvals. Any questions or concerns about this item? Anything from the public? Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve a Headworks Phase III SRF loan agreement.
So, move. Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we have our city updates.
Great, thank you. A couple, a number of updates for you tonight. First, it was a really amazing weekend in Winuski. Thank you all to the visitors and residents of Winuski who came out for a number of events, specifically Waking Windows, Green Up Day, the Arbor Day Festival. There's Dan Higgins' photo show, Seeking Winuski, at the OCC on Saturday afternoon. And then, the Dismas House Awards Dinner that the mayor will talk about later in the evening. Specifically on Waking Windows, we really want to thank the organizers of the festival who worked with us for months and months and months in advance to put together a great festival, not only for our community, but also to ensure the public safety of our city. We had, we supported the event through our public safety professionals. And huge kudos to people who worked many, many hours this weekend keeping our city safe, but we had no significant public safety issues, which is always wonderful from that festival. For Green Up Day, we had over 100 people come out and participate. We collected 1,100 pounds of paper, 1,000 pounds of electronic waste, and filled up an entire roll-off dumpster. So, greening up our city, getting ready for the summer and future events. And of course, Arbor Day that I think perhaps Counselor Duncan will talk about. And Dan Higgins' photo, Seeking Winuski photo show will remain up at the OCC for a couple of weeks if anyone is interested in seeing it. It's really very special. Just a reminder to the community that we have a special election tomorrow. Voting is open from 7 to 7 at the Senior Center at 123 Barlow Street for the school bond vote. Carol will be up very early tomorrow morning staffing that. So, thank you for the election support. On Friday, we will have a project review committee meeting. This is the group that meets to review permit applications that come in through our gateway districts, through our Form-Based Code zoning. It's an expedited zoning process outlined in the code. At the PRC meeting on Friday, we will be talking about two project permits. One, Main Street and Mansion Street, which is a second PRC meeting. We will be discussing that. And we will also be discussing a permit application for 211 to 225 Main Street, which is a new permit application, kind of middle of that mile of road. And those meetings are open to the public if folks would like to come, 11 o'clock on Friday. Along the development lines, at Cassavan Overlook, which is at 268 East Allen Street, the construction that's going on there now, I wanted to give you a heads-up that starting tonight and for the overnight work this week, East Allen will be going down to one lane of traffic in the overnight hours while they install the water and wastewater lines. So, you can expect to see that. Additionally, Manso Street will be closed at East Allen starting approximately around May 15, and will continue through December 15. They will be starting construction on City Lofts, which is the property across the street from 268 East Allen. So, there'll be construction on both of those corners, and they're going to close off that Manso entrance. Wanted to give you a quick update on two website improvements we've made. We have now built out, with the Hickok Water Main Project starting this summer, and residents seeing some construction along there, we've built out a project page for that project on our website. So, if residents are interested in the status of that work, they can go online and see updates on where that construction stands. We've also built out a page on the project review committee specifically. When projects go to the Development Review Board, they are posted publicly as your meetings are. We've done a similar thing for the PRC committee. So, if people are interested in big projects happening along our gateway district, they can go onto that website, search for Planning Review Committee, or through the Planning and Zoning Office, and you will get to that website. We got word last week that we got partial funding on our Downtown Transportation Fund grant. If you remember, we applied for about $20,000 to do wayfinding, to implement our wayfinding plans coming up. We got about $10,000 awards, slightly less than $10,000, which will be a start at implementing our wayfinding sign, but we are thinking about creative ways to backfill the balance of that funding need as well. As I mentioned earlier with Mr. Ellers, we have received word from the airport that they expect to release their noise exposure map at the end of this month. The mayor and I met with them a couple of weeks ago and really advocated that they do a Winuski-specific meeting in addition to a meeting at the airport. The airport meeting right now is scheduled for November, or for May 29. And we tentatively are planning for a meeting the following night, May 30, here in Winuski. So, many more details to come about that, but I want to make sure that was on your calendars in advance. And then, finally, Downtown Winuski has hired their executive director, 32-hour-a-week position. Meredith Bay Tyak started last week, joined us for our Waking Windows initial meeting. Is a Winuski resident and is really lovely and ready to hit the ground running. So, excited to welcome her to the team. And we'll bring her, or we'll ask Downtown Winuski to bring her to a future council meeting to meet all of you as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is council reports. Can I start with you, Jim? Because I know you have something.
I do, I do. I have two things. So, we did a couple of Arbor Day celebrations this past Friday and Saturday. On Friday, I presented to the JFK Elementary at their Arbor Day celebration. The ground was a little too wet to actually put the tree in the ground. It will be there by Wednesday. But the second graders decorated flags and planned the event for the whole school meeting. And then, on Saturday, following Green Up Day, we had a planting up on Weaver Street where we planted a new ginkgo tree that will probably do pretty well on that site and adds to, it becomes the only tree on that block planted in the right of way. So, a nice little event. Thank you. May your luck for attending and helping dig the beginning of what turned out to be a very difficult hole. We're excited to see that tree established in part of our city and to continue the tradition of having an Arbor Day celebration in Winuski.
Thank you.
So, no report, but hopefully the legislative session will end in two weeks. We'll see.
You can bring us all the juicy details from then.
Yes.
I feel like we haven't met in a while, so I don't think I've given you all of these updates. Jesse filled you in on the airport meetings we've been having. The Housing Commission met since our last meeting and continued to work on details of the Housing Trust Fund. I think that will take another two meetings probably, maybe three, before it comes to us. So, that'll be coming up. I also attended a session by the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission on Inclusionary Zoning, which is something that the Commission has sort of been talking about. And Heather attended as well as staff. And so, we brought some notes back that we will give to the Housing Commission for their future consideration. It was interesting to be a part of a Chittenden County-wide discussion, to try to hear what other folks are doing instead of, you know, making decisions in our own bubble. Last night, Jesse, myself, Yvonne Curry from our Criminal Justice, or I'm sorry.
Is it Community Justice?
Community Justice Center. Thank you. Very different. And Paul Sarn all attended the Dismas House Dinner. So, the Dismas House operates in Winuski. It's a transitional home for folks coming out of incarceration, and they help integrate them back into the community. And the city of Winuski was presented with an award, the Jack Hickey Award, if you would like to report. We were presented with this award last night for being a welcoming community. I believe they opened here in 2004 at the time when they were looking for housing. We were one of the only communities that was willing to, you know, we invited them here when other people were hesitant to have them in. So, it was very touching to hear about the work they've been doing, the people they've been supporting, and the appreciation for us as a welcoming community. That is it for me.
Just to reiterate what Jesse was saying, Downtown Winuski has hired in an executive director, and I was able to sit in on her presentation, Meredith's. And she just has great energy, and I think she's going to be a really good fit for Downtown Winuski and is going to work really, really well with business owners. So, excited for you all to meet her. Another update, a couple of weeks ago, Christine and I met with Jesse and Angela and our city's treasurer, Alex, to discuss the treasurer's roles and responsibilities. Just getting a perspective of what he does on a weekly basis for us was pretty eye-opening. And the treasurer is one of two positions that the city council oversees, the other one being the city manager. And I just also wanted to give a shout-out to Ally, Brian Nagel, and the rest of the Waking Windows crew for an amazing event this past weekend. I just, I love seeing so many people out and about in our community, and I think they just did a really great job. So, hat tip to them. Thank you.
Did you read my notes? Because I was about to say, "Thank you for the volunteers for Waking Windows." I took my daughter and my wife down there, and it was really great to see a nice atmosphere. People just getting along, enjoying music, eating some good food. Even the local restaurants on the roundabout were packed. The weather held out for us this year. And I wanted to publicly thank all the volunteers and Ally for such a great job. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we are on to our regular items. So, the first one being introduction of Raul Zavio's new accountant on staff.
I mean, I'll invite Angela and Raul up to... So, this position, just for some table setting. We, in the FY '19 budget, we created the position of a part-time staff accountant role with the city. Previously, Angela was the only finance staff. With the upcoming big capital projects, additional grant reporting we are doing because we're able to leverage new money into the city with the FY '20 budget, we've bumped that up to a full-time position and have the privilege of hiring Raul. So, I will let Angela introduce him.
So, this is Raul. He started with us on April 1, and he is proving to be such a huge asset to the finance department so far. We're getting a lot more efficiencies in place. I would love to have Raul tell you about himself.
Hi, everybody. I'm Raul. Prior to working here, I worked at Engineering Ventures for two years, then Vermont Youth Conservation Corps for almost two years too. Here in this place, I'm very happy I'm working because my coworkers are very well-educated. I'm very happy. I have to say thank you for the city of Winuski because I'm surprised. Also, you know, the city of Winuski is the most diverse city in Vermont. So, it's why I decided to apply here, and I'm very happy for that. Thank you for everybody. So, I'm here. Thank you to you.
Well, thank you for joining the team.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you. Angela has already said great things about the help you've been providing. Is there anything you want to share about your background and the work that you're doing that you're really excited about?
Yeah, here in city of Winuski, learning everything new is a new software. I'm very happy that Angela is, I'm working with Angela in the same office, but I always thought Angela is like a computer. She's so... So, basically, I'm working with a computer next to me.
Can't go wrong. That's great. And you all have any questions or...
No, thank you for joining us and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming in tonight to just get to know your face.
Thank you.
Thanks, Raul.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is approval for the Winuski Memorial Day Parade event permit application.
Good evening. We've received the annual application from the VFW for the Memorial Day Parade, which will be on Saturday, May 25th this year. This event involves the closure of Main Street between Tygen and Maple Streets for the duration of the parade. And we'll also have over 200 participants, so it requires city council approval. The formation will be at 11:00 AM at the Winuski School District, and step-off will be at noon. And then, the parade will progress down Main Street to Maple Street and will end at the VFW, where there will be a ceremony and a barbecue to follow. All of you are invited to participate in the parade and also in the ceremony afterward and to enjoy the barbecue, and the community is invited as well. And staff recommends approval of this event.
Any notable differences than prior years, or it's like the same area?
It's generally the same. I have to say that normally, I'm the person who is the liaison from the city, and this year, I'm not. So, I wasn't at the preliminary meeting, so I haven't heard anything majorly different.
There's no major changes.
Alright, any questions from the council?
I believe they're looking for more floats.
I think they're always looking for more floats, absolutely.
They're looking for more people to walk in the streets. So, if anyone knows anybody or is interested in getting into it, now's the time to talk about it.
Any questions or comments from the public? Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve the Winuski Memorial Day Parade event permit application.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Hal, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have for approval a chicken permit for Suzanne Blaine at 64 West Street. Next up, we have for approval, a chicken permit for Suzanne Blaine at 64 West Street.
I think you should skip the tree ordinance.
Oh, did I jump over that? Very sorry.
Daggers, Christine.
The next item is introduction of the tree ordinance and possible set public hearing.
So the tree ordinance that's included in the materials on the agenda is representative changes that were shown at the last council meeting and were drafted by John and forwarded to me. So I think that this, there's nothing new or different than what was discussed at the previous meetings on this topic. So if there's any questions, I can answer them. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Jessie?
So just from, this is kind of a process item for tonight. I mean, you're welcome to discuss and make changes if you would like. From a process standpoint, it has to be officially introduced, which Jim has just done. And then you need to actually vote to set a public hearing date, which we will then notice. You can do that for your next meeting on May 20th. After that public hearing on this ordinance change, then you can either change it, amend it, or adopt it that evening.
And I would add some background for folks who are here now or viewing that this ordinance gives guidance to public works on how they're already caring for trees that are in the public domain.
Do you want me to say a little bit more about that?
Yeah.
So yeah, the tree ordinance is representing a shift in how we manage public trees in the city. So it better defines what is a public tree, who has jurisdiction over that public tree, how can public trees be removed, and what do we need to do to care for them? A major reason for having this is that it is often, it's been difficult to have proactive tree management in the city without guidance on that, those aspects of tree management. And this ordinance somewhat rationalizes and provides procedures for dealing with trees that are being planted, with trees that might become hazards, and with how to replace trees in the city. A major reason for having an ordinance like this is that it provides better guidance to city staff when there are issues around public trees. And it also provides a mechanism for the city to secure additional funding for other tree projects in the future because this is a major step in becoming a Tree City USA, which Winuski would be qualifying for with the passage of this ordinance. Are there any other aspects you'd like me to cover?
That's a good summary.
Okay.
Were there any questions or concerns about this from council members? Any from the audience today?
All the trees in the reservoir behind Dale Street, are those included in the trees?
Yeah, if they're in public, in city property, then they'll be considered public trees.
So Winuski is responsible for all the trees?
It has been before, this just doesn't make some more about how those will be managed.
Right. Kind of related, but the reservoir, who's responsible for that? I'm going to change the subject. It's getting kind of gross. You know, the firemen are down there once a week on Tuesdays and it's just getting, it's all clogged up and it's getting bad. I mean, the geese aren't even coming back this year. Anyway, close to the trees.
Thank you for pointing that out.
So do we want to move forward with the suggested date of May 20th for the public hearing?
I would say so.
Entertained a motion. So somebody should make a motion to set the public hearing date for May 20th.
So I would move that we set the public hearing date for May 20th.
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. May 20th, we will have public hearing on the tree ordinance. Thank you. I'm starting to catch my error there. Now we are on to the chicken permit for 64 West Street.
So while our neighbors are coming up, the city ordinance requires that anyone keeping chickens in the city get a permit from, that's approved by the city council. This family has submitted their permit request, it's been reviewed and is in compliance with zoning, so we recommend you approve their permit.
Well, you approve our permit.
Are there any questions or concerns from council?
Has there been any concerns with your neighbors on the chicken coop?
Not that we know of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of, okay.
They may have talked to you, but not to us, so we don't know. We hope not.
I think if there were, if there was a record of complaints, staff, staff would have been there for this one. Good question, though.
Just asking.
Any questions or concerns from the audience?
Another reason we feel the burning.
For the chickens?
Yeah, so we smoked and we hurt the chickens.
I would entertain a motion to approve the chicken permit for Suzanne Blaine at 64 West Street.
So move.
Motion by House, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. You're good to go with your chickens.
Thank you.
Very nice, Mike.
So next, we have a second chicken permit for Stefan De Petrus at 57 Franklin Street. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
De Petrus.
De Petrus, okay, thank you.
So similarly, we've received a permit. It's gone through zoning review and we recommend a poop.
I just wanted to say that we had a good laugh about the chicken wiggle farm that you've acquired your chickens from.
I know, right?
Any questions or concerns from council? Perhaps similarly, have there been any complaints from your neighbors?
No, we've checked with both neighbors on either side. They're happy to have chickens.
Awesome. Very neighborly of you. Any questions or concerns from the audience? All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the chicken permit for Stefan De Petrus at 57 Franklin Street.
So move. Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Our next item on the agenda is discussion of the quarterly treasurer report and our treasurer, Alexander, will join us for this.
Good evening, city council. A pleasure to present the quarterly financials. Do you have any questions before we get started?
Is there any general overview that you would like to give on the big picture of City of Winuski finances?
Roughly, the city is in a, I would say, a safe and financial place. We'll kind of extend the review that I gave in the prior quarter. Some volume, some volume-driven accounts, water charges and parking fees have slightly slipped for the quarter. But of course, as we're coming into the summer session, events like the waking windows, I expect that to resume. The city's also done a great job of controlling costs. I didn't see anything that stuck out, so I would say overall, we're continuing our healthy financial status.
That's good news. Are there any questions or concerns from council? Any specific items you wanted to ask about? All right. I love a general, healthy finances.
Yes, yep. Boring is good.
Any questions or concerns from the public? All right, with no further commentary, this is just an item for discussion, so no approval is needed. Thank you for putting this together for us.
You're welcome. I'll do a general public review. So the general fund has continued its strength from the prior quarter. We had a $28,000 surplus projected for the end of the year three months ago. It's up to $42,000. And if we actually look at, there's approximately $60,000 in expenses that were approved by the city council that were not in the original budget. So the surplus is actually close to $100,000. And so I can be seen as sort of an operational efficiency, how well we're controlling costs. Items of significance, the O'Brien Center. Over the last quarter, we have about a 10% projected increase in revenue. The city has done a great job of assessing the situation. The public will learn a little bit, will learn a little bit more about that later this evening, but they've done a great job of assessing and making a change so that that will be a financially secure location. With 88% of the projected revenue and 77% of projected expenses already accounted for thus far, I don't see the surpluses suddenly disappearing. I feel fairly secure that as we kind of come into the end of the year, there are no major areas of concern. Looking at maybe things as you're reviewing the finances, some things that might stand out, the wastewater fund has a $295,000 projected shortage coming into the year, but 277 of that are actually just fixed costs coming into reconstruction. So it's not really an operational issue. So moving into next year, I would expect to see that actually run pretty close to break even. Coming down into the parking space, we received payment for the settlement of the spinner place, so $250,000 was allocated to the parking funds, which will be, that's currently showing a huge surplus, but that's going to be eventually allocated towards the Eboni Garage. So that's not going to, we're not going to see this huge surplus hanging around. We did see revenue for parking fees kind of graduate down by expected waking windows. I kind of, I'm not currently concerned about that. So like I say, boring is good, not a lot of areas of concern. Moving down to the TIFT fund, that's where the remainder of the spinner place payment was, payment was allocated towards, that's going to be used towards paying off debt. So once again, nothing really exciting looking at there. And with the revenue based off property taxes, I expect the TIFT, the current surplus to kind of just continue right into the end of the year. The only area of concern I would like to note is the Community Services Program. From our prior quarterly report, projected surplus has actually, has been reduced by an addition of $40,000. The department has done a great job of controlling costs, but I think looking at what's putting pressure on citizens, what's putting pressure on the revenue, and that would certainly be valuable. Like I said, the department's been a great job of controlling costs as much as they possibly can. And then kind of reviewing to the Community Justice Center, the Rental Registry Fund, and the Community Economic Development, all of these have projected a surplus kind of coming into, into the year. Revenue, once again, expenses have been responsibly controlled and revenue accounts are based upon either they're debt-based or they're based upon grants. So I see the risk of there being a sudden shift, they're fairly low. So I expect them all to come into a surplus as well coming into end of the year. And that is, that is it. Boring is good. Any other final questions or anything else, feel free to email me and I am happy to dig in and work with Angela. She's been excellent to work with.
If I can make a commentary as well on this, I think one of the most important things to note from Alex's very comprehensive report, thank you, is the projected year-end surplus. We talk about that at each quarterly report, but until this report to you, it's hard to have a whole lot of faith in that number because we haven't gone through the winter months, we don't know about water breaks, et cetera, things that really could change end-of-year finances. So with this first paragraph here under the general fund, the treasurer is saying that right now we're running about a $55,000 potential surplus that bumps up to 97 if, when you take out those one-time expenses you all have already allocated with your, or you or the prior council allocated with the reserve fund requests. So just as a kind of commentary on that, the past few fiscal years, we have ended the fiscal year with several hundred thousand dollars in surplus. That is not from a kind of municipal finance perspective, that's not actually a great thing. You want to be closer to what you've budgeted, so you're only raising the tax, we're only taxing our residents for those funds we actually need to operate the city. I think 100,000 is a, in a, you know, almost $7 million budget, that's a pretty good margin. I think it's important to bring up tonight because later in the agenda, we do have a request for the use of reserves. So when you think about, when you see that number and think about those, that total savings account that is sitting there, that is added to at the end of each year with these reserve balances. So while in previous years, it was running closer to 200,000, 250,000, this year will be only the 100,000. It's still a very healthy surplus, I think keeps a good rainy day fund for us, but is closer to actual expenditures equaling budget. So just a little commentary about that.
Great, thank you. Any other final questions or concerns?
I would just, one more time to the public in case something came up. All right, thank you.
All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
All right, so our next item is approval of Myers Memorial Pool. We have awarding a construction contract, considering a change order and the amount of debt that we will bond for.
So while John is setting up here, as you just mentioned, Christine, there are, we have included this as one council agenda item because it's all linked, but there are actually three different votes we'll be looking for you to consider tonight. The award of the construction contract, a potential change order, an immediate change order after approval of the contract, and then setting that actual value of debt to incur that is needed for the bond application that we will put in later in the week.
I'm sorry to have a spreadsheet open. It's got so much going on. So we, we received bids for the pool project on April 10th. We had five bidders for the project and the actual bids came in lower than what we had estimated during the design process. So project team is very happy with the number of bids and the price of those bids. So as Jessie mentioned, there's sort of a procedural piece to this that we have to first look at sort of awarding the base bid or base bid with deduct option and then procedurally look at if because those bids came in lower, there's an opportunity to add some change orders. Those are all added change orders that we'll be talking about. So stainless steel Mirtha system, so this was previously in the project. What that is, is basically the pool shell, right now we've bid it as a concrete structure. So the Mirtha system is stainless steel, it has a, you know, 25-year more longevity than concrete, less maintenance.
John, can you speak up?
Yes. Sorry. Sorry. So we'll get into some of the details of that and then of course, the slide, we bid the project with a smaller slide. Again, as we're moving through the design process, we would do estimates and we're trying to hit a target that we set for the FY20 budget. So in order to do that, we had to pull some stuff back and again, because we have some more pricing that came in, there's an opportunity to look at change orders if the council wants to review that. And then the third step, which is basically comes out of those two first items is based on the base bid option that you guys select with the, with the deducts or not, or, and with the change orders potentially, that will set the limit for the bond amount that we will be pursuing. So just one schedule note, so we are applying for the summer bond issuance, which will be May 8th. So not to put any pressure on you, but we will, yeah, we will need a decision tonight on the sort of project scope and bond amount in order to meet that deadline for the summer issuance.
And the next opportunity is six months out?
Could be the winter.
Yeah, the winter issuance.
December.
December, yeah, so.
Yeah. So in your packet, I provided a memo and I'll go kind of through the step one bid award process first. So we are recommending to award to the low bid contractor, Russell, for the GC work. We did our due diligence, talking to the references. They actually built the Rutland Pool, which was sort of a model for this pool and we, our staff has actually gone down and done some facility tours and made some contacts with the Rutland folks to help with certain maintenance items that come on. So we are recommending that as sort of the first step. And then within the bid, this gets into sort of the deduct options. Slide over here. So you can see here, within the bid, there was these four items that were potential deducts. So we put those in in case, you know, the bids were higher than what we anticipated. The Russell bid proposal came in at $3,105,000 for the construction bid. And then the total deducts that are options are shown here add up to $234,500. So step one for the council would be to, you know, potentially award for the base bid project, which is at $3,105,000. And that includes all those items, the shade structure, the slide, which is a smaller slide, it's a 10-foot, one-loop slide, the UV system and a locker, pool deck, $4,500. So I'll kind of pause there for any questions on base bid items.
So the 3.1 million does not include the shade structure? So the three point one million does not include the shade structure, any slide, ultraviolet, or lockers?
It does.
It does?
Yep.
It does include those?
It does, yes.
Okay.
So the three point, three million, one hundred and five thousand includes all of those items, and it's.
I see, that's why you referred to the smaller slide?
Yep.
Okay.
So just to underline the point John just made, because we were concerned about the total cost of the project, we received recommendations from our engineers about things we could remove from the project and still complete the tool pool project within the community's vision. So these were what's called out alternates, or, you know, deductible items that allow the project to move forward, but if you want them, come with an additional cost. So three point one includes all of those, if you want to get that number lower, then you, then we would take them out of that three point one million.
I would say too, historically, is this not the list of items that we attach to the fundraising? I probably have that.
Well, the fundraising, in my opinion, the Myers Foundation was going to be allocating the money to the city with specific uses, or are we just gonna, no, we, or is the Myers Pool Foundation just going to give the gift to the city and let them use it when they need it? Cindy?
Yes.
It's your time.
Yes, that's the interpretation of the foundation. We didn't want to pick certain items that we would quarter go fund, that we would just commit to donating three hundred thousand dollars to the Minnesota. To be used as discretion.
And I see that the Myers Pool Foundation committee members are here. I don't know if they're here to present a letter of intent, so I don't know if we want to do that before or after. When, when does the city want to?
I think that is relevant, like, understanding that financial picture is relevant to making this decision as part of the bigger conversation.
And how much, wasn't the bond approved for three point nine?
Correct.
So, so this three point one, is this including the ten-foot slide or this sixteen-foot slide?
The ten-foot.
Ten-foot.
The ten-foot. And the concrete liner.
Correct.
So then is that asked to the council to approve this three point one for those that ask to say, we'd like to add the two thirty-four to the two hundred?
So if I, if we can back up for a minute, I think one of the things that might be helpful, do you have this memo up on your computer? Or can you go to the website and pull it up? So in the memo that John has presented for the council, which is on the website, if people at home want to look at it, there are, there are five different options he's laid out and modeled. So we have just the base bid, the base bid with the deducts, which would be a lower amount, the base bid with the Mirtha pool system change order, the base bid with the larger slide change order. So those are the options for the council to consider. How minor, I think how we built the model is assuming the base bid, i.e. no deducts, everything in, and the Mirtha pool, and the larger slide, still comes in under, with the foundation's contribution and the grant received by the city, still comes in under the amount we budgeted for, for FY twenty. Does that make sense?
But what's that amount? Do you have that amount?
So if only it was as simple as just base bid, there's, of course, there's other things that go into the bid, so there's, yep, so the total.
In regards to the one point three?
In the, in the recommendation memo, this three million, four hundred and seventeen thousand is the bond amount number that we are recommending. So that includes the base bid, ten-foot slide in this option, and the Mirtha system. And the reason we recommend Mirtha system was the, the sort of operational savings over the lifetime of the pool. So that, that upfront cost for the Mirtha system does pay for itself over the twenty-five year warranty.
So what's the difference between the ten-foot slide and the bigger slide? What's the money difference?
Sixty-two thousand? And actually, it's, it's in here in this model here. So what I've done here is kind of lay out different scenarios. So it goes from least expensive to, you know, most expensive. So base bid, if you throw in all the deducts, you can see the construction award amount all the way over to the bonding amount, and then same as you go down. If we remove, say, some of the lower cost items in the deduct, you know, it gets a little bit more expensive, and then a base bid only option, and then you get in the bottom two are the change order additions. So those are kind of different scenarios that you could go for. And just to make it a little more confusing, you could add a deduct and a change order in there too, so. But we wanted to lay out some kind of very, you know, simple options that could be done.
So I do have one question on the shade structure. I'm not sure where you came up with the eighty thousand, five hundred dollars for that. That's always been around the thirty-five thousand dollar price tag range all the way through the whole planning process. So this eighty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars, this is a really high amount, and it's a new amount for any of us, anyway. So if you could just clarify, did you make it bigger? Did you?
So it's a, it's a timber structure, twenty by thirty, it has foundations, it has a quartz slab. That was the, the contractor, I mean, that was the bid cost, and all of the five bidders were right around that range.
Okay.
So that, that is included though, the base bid, that eighty thousand dollars is included in that.
And I thought, the last time that I was at a meeting, which I thought that I've been attending all of them as far as the pool goes, I thought that the shade structure was one of the items that was going to get taken away when you tried to cut the costs.
So it's listed as a deduct option for the council if they wanted to select that manually.
Okay. But the base bid dash all deduct means it includes the reduction option items?
Yep.
They're not reduced, they are in.
Yes.
All, all this stuff and all the items with the red, that's, that's in with the base bid.
And Cindy, just further to your point, I think this is one of, when you have kind of multi-year engineering and, and construction processes like this, where you have, you know, a kind of conceptual plan, that then becomes a preliminary plan, that then is final engineered, and then a cost estimate is done, those values can change quite significantly over the life of that project, which is why we don't set the actual bond amount, amount to be bonded until after we know what the contractor is willing to build it for. So yeah, sometimes the numbers can change significantly, it's, it's what the contractor can build it for at the moment.
And I will say, this is probably one of the best scenarios I've ever looked for projects, in saying, hey, we're under.
It's under budget.
We can do a full project and still be close to what we, you know, we modeled.
I also think it's important to remember what the voters voted on too, for this project. They, they had in mind, the big slide was an amenity that most of the voters that voted talked about. So I think that needs to be implemented, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but the council, I'm almost willing to think that the shaded structure could be taken out right now and built later, at a later date by volunteers, if, if, hang on, hell.
No, I'm getting your attention.
And then we can use that money, the difference of that money, to put in towards the larger slide, and that way it still stays under what we're doing. I mean, we can do both, and we'll be under what the voters wanted, but we can even try to save even a little bit more money, is what I'm thinking that we should consider.
So I have a clarifying question. So would the amount that's going to be donated from the fundraising be above and beyond the highest priced item here, which could include expanding a slide or what happened?
Yep. So what, what you're seeing in that sort of bond amount column, that takes into account the three hundred thousand dollars that's going to be removed from the amount of debt we have to take, and the land and water conservation grant, the hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred. So that is included in these calculations.
Okay. That's helpful.
And do we have an estimate of how much has been raised so far?
We have a letter to present, a letter of intent to present for the full three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Before we move on with discussion, I just want to thank you and the rest of the fundraising committee and the Myers Foundation, very pleased, impressed that you've met the benchmark that was set for you, and I'm also impressed at the shift in, you know, gifting it at the discretion. I thought we were tying it to items, but whatever you want to do is obviously acceptable. So just want to express thanks for the hard work that's gone into helping to reduce the cost here overall.
Thank you.
Back to the finances.
Right. I mean, is that a doable option, John, to, to pull out the shaded structure for now? Maybe just from twenty twenty?
Yep, so that's one of those things you can pull out, and it's easy to, to just construct at later day. We pour the slab, probably.
Pour the slab?
Yep.
Because I think we could, I, we can probably do better than eighty thousand dollars. I, I know we can, actually. But with that said, we can use that, that difference in money for the larger slide to try to keep the cost down and give the voters what they wanted.
So it just so happens I have a plug and play.
But, but before we do that too much, the sixty-two thousand would include the slab, I would imagine.
So there, yeah, there's, it's a small cost, I'd say we could probably, within the contingency, of the five percent contingency of projects, I don't think we'd have the model anything more.
So I mean, you're right, we're talking cents. So we might as well just go for the whole thing, and do what the voters and the citizens of, that voted on it, which was a pretty good amount of people voting, give them what they want.
So I would like to ask about, what we're looking at here for these two possible add-ins is just the installation, actually. I'd be curious what the, there's additional costs for the debt service over time. Are there operational impacts to the larger slide? Are there additional costs there over time? With this Mirtha system, seems like a, like it's about a hundred thousand dollar savings over time against the having to re-plaster the concrete. But what happens at the end of that twenty-five year warranty? Like what is the longer-term financial picture with these items?
Sure, yep. Great questions. So we tried to outline a couple of things here in the estimated O and M reductions. So first with the slide, we, we reached out to Rutland and our pool consultant on operational costs. So, you know, does a sixteen-foot slide require an additional lifeguard? That's, that's our biggest concern, because that is a pretty significant cost, and it does not, you know, as far as construction-wise, it's similar foundations, similar energy consumption. So operationally, there's really not a difference between the ten-foot versus the sixteen-foot. With the liner system, there is a pretty significant savings. So I've outlined here, and actually in your packet, in the appendancy that talks about the Mirtha system. So over the twenty-five year warranty period, it works out to be about five hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars in savings over the concrete system, because you have to do the acid washes and the replastering of the concrete five to eight year intervals. That does not include, however, as you mentioned, the additional interest payment that you'd pay on the debt. So there is some interest payment because you're, you know, you're taking out more debt, but that still wouldn't equate to the delta between the five hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, so clarifying question then. I, I had read this, that that five hundred thousand dollars was the cost of operation of maintaining the concrete?
Right.
So then the actual difference, because we're paying the additional two hundred and sixty-one thousand, it's like a two hundred some thousand savings?
Yep.
Okay.
And we did talk with the consultant about what is the O and M sort of requirements for that Mirtha system? So no, there's no like cost operations, so there's no replacement work. It's, it's basically spray washing the liner with one of our in-kind staff, so we shouldn't see any cost during the twenty-five year warranty. So after the twenty-five year warranty, you know, it is expected that that system will be, you know, will maintain its useful life to year forty, but the manufacturer's just not gonna, you know, they're not gonna warranty any work.
Right, but that pool liner is guaranteed, it's, the lifespan of that pool liner is forty years.
Correct.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if they meant.
But I think that, I remember Weston and Sampson, I remember them saying that, and that's what the selling point was, because we don't have to worry about the concrete work. And that's, the public needs to know that too. You're talking about a pool shell that can last forty years compared to twenty years on a concrete shell, and I think that's a huge savings in the long run for the city.
So the concrete shell should also last the forty years, but it just, it has, it needs every maintenance.
Was that also, was that not one of the issues with why we had to, with what went wrong with the previous pool, was the liner?
It was concrete. Well, we didn't have, if I can take that one, John, the, the maintenance program of the previous pool wasn't implemented like it's going to be on this new structure. We have a maintenance program in place, I don't know how in detail it is yet, but we do have a maintenance program that should be in place, so the, the same thing doesn't happen. But you gotta understand, the pool was built in nineteen seventy-three, and it lasted forty years, you know, forty-three years, and that's twenty-three years over the lifespan of that pool, so.
So are you saying it lasted without being resurfaced and any of that maintenance?
No, it was maintenance, but the maintenance wasn't up to the scale maintenance that this pool's gonna have. This, this pool will have a maintenance program that's going to be in the city budget that we already discussed years ago, when we first started this process. So the other pool maintenance was kind of, it was kind of on a volunteer basis with the city staffer, Joe, Joe, Joe Shaw, and some volunteers from the city that maintained that pool and kept it going for the kids. And that was in my take on it, because I've seen, because I've been there, without Yankee Plumbing or, or Myers Construction or Myers Containers, the pool would have been closed years and years ago, in my opinion, of course.
So it's also a fiberglass shell system, which is a little less robust than, say, like a concrete or a, you know, the Mirtha type system? I think there was some void space and some issues.
Yeah, I think there were some, some cracks in the fiberglass, which allowed the chemicalized water to get behind there, and that started to erode the concrete structure behind it. So that led to further dead space, which led to further leaking, which caused just, it compounded an issue over time. So again, I think the difference between the fiberglass, which was there, and even the concrete that was presented, that would be a much better system than what had been there. Again, just it's forty years, fifty years, labor technology.
Right.
But the concrete definitely was problematic because of the impact of the chemicalized water on it. Sort of fascinated to see what's behind there, honestly. The fiberglass shells.
Well, I also think the city learned a lesson too on the maintenance of, of facilities like this too. I mean, you have to maintain them, you have to have a program in place to make sure the lifespan of the pool that the taxpayers are paying for needs to maintain. I mean, you just can't let it go.
Has there been any research done on which type of liner would work better in our region, given that this is only going to be used for a couple of months of the year, and then the rest of the time it's going to be outside, exposed to the elements?
Yeah, and again, ready to jump in, because I knew you were currently original, but our consultant who's done a lot of pool jobs in New England region, they recommended the Mirtha system based on their climate and kind of how we're using it.
I'd say generally, there's been fewer of them in limited in the Northeast, largely just because of the cost discrepancy, and because it's a short season, I think most of those projects opted to save the upfront cost versus invest, but because of the good financial situation we find ourselves in with the bids, we have the ability to look at that. But yeah, there's a few, I know in Canada, and I think one in Maine was the other one that we looked at, that have all held up well to date, and it's a very reputable company within the robotics field, so we feel pretty confident.
I definitely think it's a big win that it came under and we're able to put this pool under, and I think it's a huge win for, for the pool committee that was working on this, for the Myers Pool Foundation, and for the city itself. I think this is a huge, huge win. If we pass it, of course.
Can I ask a question about the slide? Is there a particular reason that you didn't recommend inclusion of the? Is there a particular reason that you didn't recommend inclusion of the slide in the memo?
So we were, so I guess my stance is trying to keep it operational, not really an amenities recommendation. I think that's really all up to you folks, but we're looking at the financing and the operations more than sort of the amenities piece of it.
And related to the amenities piece, have you looked at what this might mean for increased potential revenue from having a more attractive slide for neighboring communities or our community?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we've not adjusted the revenue model at all based on adjusting the slide because it's a really difficult thing to predict. You know, six extra feet of slide, jump your number of daily attendees by 50, 100, I mean, it's hard to tell. I definitely think just from a purely anecdotal space that, you know, a bigger feature like that will definitely be attractive and likely increase participation. But I don't think we could hop out and sit here and say it'll be a 20% increase or a 10% increase. So we've kind of left the revenues put for now.
I also think it'd be, this facility won't be anything like it around in our, in Chindon County too. So we have a potential to reach outside our community, which we've already heard from people from Milton, Colchester, even Burlington. They're excited, they want to see it in the ground just as much as the Lewinsky residents do. So I think we have a source that we can tap outside that too, if we have the amenities. But that's my opinion again.
I would say to the, along those same lines though, if we are literally the only pool with a slide in the area, do we really need to make it even better or is the fact that we have the only one enough?
There's one to ask.
Did you have one? Okay. Did you, yeah?
So is there any difference in insurance liability between the two slides?
There's not, we actually, yeah, we checked with the LCT on that. That was a, that was a burning question for us as well that we would want to model and they confirmed it was not.
Thank you.
Revisiting previous discussions, the value engineering. As I recall, or as is written here, the UV disinfection was stated to have no actual operational, like it was kind of a wash?
Yeah, so the UV is, we've had some discussions on this internally as a team. So the UV system is, I would say, built in suspenders. It does support the main disinfection system, which is a chlorine tablet system. The benefit of UV is that it treats some of those chlorine resistant pathogens. So there is sort of a health benefit. Talking with the pool consultant though, there's not a lot of outdoor pools that use a UV system in conjunction with the chlorine system. Typically, they're used inside to treat sort of off-gassing chlorine. So you know, if you go into an indoor pool and you don't smell that chlorine smell, they probably have a UV system. Obviously, that's not as important in outdoor pool. But we did leave it in there because it was part of the initial bid. It does serve a health benefit. This is just for the family pool side, it does not, it's not for the competitive pool. But talking with the consultant, he was not concerned if it was removed. That's an item that can be easily put in if we did want to install it later. So basically, we build it, we're gonna build sort of a T and then if we decide we want to install this system, it's just putting in, bolting it in.
Do we know what kind of health issues this is? Not to put Jim aside, do you know?
If it wasn't installed, it, I mean, I could go on record to the health issues.
No, 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 I know.
The current chlorine, the chlorine system imposed is adequate.
Okay.
You know, what we need for disinfection.
Okay.
Strategic.
Yeah.
He's excited for the pool.
Do we want to move to more public comment?
So, and like what you just said is a possibility that that could be taken out of the budget too?
Yeah.
And who's gonna make the decision?
The five of us.
And also, I didn't hear the first part because of mic issues. Is your, Russell, are they local people?
So they are, they're a Vermont company, they're the oldest GC in Vermont. They did the Ruttman pool, which is very similar to ours. Yeah, I think, yes, I think they're actually out of problems.
Any other public comment yet?
Big slide? The donators wanted. What's that again? Say that again? It's what the donators wanted, at least the people that I spoke to, want a big slide. Yeah.
I will say historically, in the previous conversations we had, as I had mentioned, we had kind of tied the fundraising goal to a series of items and the slide was included in that.
And it was in our brochure, everybody that got donations from, it was in the brochure. So now if they find out that it's not in there, I don't know if they would take their money back, but I'm just saying it's kind of false advertising on our part. Only for under budget.
Yeah.
And we're giving the money, you know, in good faith. I think we can also project the pool if that's what people are looking for.
I would add a little more context too, that when this vote happened, we did sort of advertise it to the community like we could potentially build this, but we are also going to make sure that the financial impact is sustainable for us. So there is some leeway in there.
And I think everyone will be overjoyed that it came under what we were projecting. And that's a big win for the, for us as well, I think.
One caveat with that, if you do decide to go with the base bid and the Murtha and slide, it's a little over. So I just, just to be clear. So the number I highlighted, that would be the recommended bonding amount for the
3.4?
3.482 versus 3.445. Just to be totally clear. I mean, so you could do a deduct on one of those other smaller items to get to that FY20.
Does that include the shade structure?
Yes.
So we could take that UV out and the shade of structure and then build it later?
And that would give you.
Because I just know, I know we can do it less than $80,000, I just know. So, I mean, how do you want to move on this?
Well, I guess I do have a concern about removing it and then having to put it back in at some point. If we are gonna try and, if we want to have a shade structure, actually understanding now what our mechanism for having it built in the next two years would be, I don't think opening it, I think it would be unfortunate to end up with a pool that does not have a shade structure at all, at any length of time.
Then it'll be there.
Yeah, it's open and it's gonna be hotter and hotter in the summer. So I guess that's my only concern with removing it. At this point, when we do have the ability to build this as a package, how do we, as a council, make sure that that does get built in the future? What mechanism do we use? So that's my kind of one concern about removing the shade structure entirely from the budget.
Jim, I don't want to remove any of it, so I'm good with it as it is, to be honest with you. I think the voters would be too, because we're still right there, in my opinion. And I want the big slide. I want to be the first one down it.
Well, maybe that's a question to you all and stat, like if stat, you see other mechanisms by which we could get that built outside of this bond and budget?
Yeah, so definitely, I do hear your point though. I mean, going to Essex Pool, you will see families congregating under shade. I know with our kids, same deal. So it is, I think it is an important aspect and at some point along the project timeline, it would need to be constructed to provide comfort.
Sorry. So it's $65,000 is the difference, correct? Between those bottom two numbers? So just, this is my opinion, this is not guidance. I think if we were going to take out the shade structure, but there was still a value on the council to build it sooner rather than later, I would, an option for you to think about would be to use general fund reserves and allocate those to this project now for this contractor to do. I think if we think about having this contractor build the pool, open the pool, bring in another contractor or, I mean, if we do it with volunteers, that's a different, a different thing. I think it's actually going to cost us more in the long run to hire another contractor to build it at a later date. You could, if you didn't want to bond it and carry that extra interest payment associated with the $80,000, you could authorize a use of reserves to fund that portion of the project. And Angela, feel free to speak up if you have other ideas that we're all missing.
That was absolutely my idea.
When I stated about taking the shaded structure out, I wasn't thinking about hiring another contractor because we have some talented people in the city that would probably love to do it, just to put their mark on a facility. And that's, well, as, I don't know, as a council or I would recommend or ask the pool foundation to find those people to volunteer, even if it's to counsel their cooking hamburgers and hot dogs for them as they work. There's no.
I mean, I don't want to speak to the foundation, but I'm very confident that the foundation could get that shade structure built.
Yeah, me too.
And that's certainly a half. Umbrellas will be available, right? For kids, I mean, I grew up Lewski and I don't recall us having a shade structure when I was on Lewski's swim team 30 years ago, so I remember having umbrellas planted right around and.
30 years ago?
Maybe a little longer, maybe a little longer.
Now, what is, what would be the cost, do you know, John, if we built the infrastructure for that? Or do we just do the pad and then no infrastructure, no threaded rod sticking out and having it cover for the timbers? Or do we just pour the pad in your recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I would probably pour the pad at least, because they're gonna be pouring the deck anyways, if that makes sense. And then you could potentially do the foundations separate or, you know, pending where we end up towards the end of the project at those foundations as well. But, I mean, I would say at least pour the pad.
How much would the pad cost?
I mean, we do.
The pad costs, concrete's expensive, so it would be.
Yeah, you'd be just pouring the pad, you'd be mixing it in with the rest of the foundation that you're using.
Yeah, it's part of the pool deck.
It's part of the pool deck anyway.
Probably clean out the bottom a little symmetra.
So what is the contingency fine for this project?
So we have a 5% contingency for this project. So if we were to pull out the shade structure, that plays to $151,225. Now, we are digging in the ground, so that, you know, that always opens up some potential items, but that's what we're carrying currently.
So is there any possibility that towards the end of the project, there's gonna be considerable balance in that that could be considered?
There could be, yes.
And I do want to reiterate that this is not a standalone expense. We have a bigger picture. You know, we have the main street costs that are coming up. Folks are being asked to vote on a significant increase for the school tomorrow. My personal philosophy is always to pull back a little bit.
I say we do it. I say we take out the UV and the shaded structure and worry about it at a later date, because I know we can get it done. And we're not gonna hire another contractor to do it. It's gonna be, considering the liability, Jesse, for someone to come in as a volunteer to do it, I don't know where that, what would the city say on that? If we had people that were lined up to build a shaded structure on a volunteer basis, of course, the city would have to pay for the material, I'm sure. We would find it somehow. Where's the liability start and end for people doing that?
So I'm always cautious about this, so what I would ideally love to see is somebody who is licensed, like a licensed contractor to oversee a group of volunteers. We have those in the city, we probably could get that donated as well. But I think as long as we had somebody on site who knew what they were doing, I don't think we would have a whole lot of liability.
Okay.
I don't want to do it. I don't want to be responsible for it.
And that would be a question for the volunteers and what their insurance liability would be. I mean, they're not making any money, so I don't know. But we will get it done, one way or the other. But it will be by professionals too. I'm a lecturer, so I'm not gonna go build a timber structure, for example. There will be carpenters doing the work.
You can build it out of conduit.
Yes. Power for it. But what do you think? Do we take that out?
I'm amenable to removing these two items to keep in the other two.
So to be clear, the structure, the shade structure and the UV system?
And then, and then we go ahead and keep in the larger slide in the Murtha.
But still keeping the pad for the shade structure. Of course, that infrastructure is part of that $80,000, right? So there's some portion of that.
Some portion that stays.
Well, it's, it's part of the pool deck anyway.
I'm unclear that, is that $80,000 include the concrete and pour for the, the deck for the shade structure? So there's, we want to get $80,000 off.
Any idea what it would be without the wood?
Well, going back into the estimate now.
No, but I'm sure the timbers that they had in mind are expensive timbers. They're kind of like the pool house timbers. If you've ever been in the pool house, the ceiling, the roof lines, those are timbers and those, those are not, they're not cheap by any means.
Important to understand. Where's most of the cost? Is it in the wood or is it in the concrete? Because if we're doing all of this and we're, and the concrete is not that much of an expense because there's so much already being done, is it worth taking it out? Because adding logistics, timing and people and supplies to take all of that on if that costs, excuse me, if the savings isn't ultimately there because we have to split it between the wood and the concrete?
That's something we're gonna need to know now too, if we're gonna.
So I think, I think the reality, I mean, this is the hardest part about doing this real time and you need to get it to a number tonight. I don't think we are going to understand tonight how that $80,000 is split out. I think we should make an educated guess, 50%, about 30, I don't know what that percentage is, and just acknowledge that there, we may need to go into contingency. We may need to come back for a fund balance request if we don't get that estimate right. But I don't think we're gonna have a hard and fast number of what it's gonna cost to pour that, that pad now. So I think what we would need from you is a signal that, yes, pour the pad. We think that's gonna be X number of dollars, we're gonna add that into the bottom line amount to, for the bond authorization and go from there.
Could we get the fundraising info before we do a vote on this?
Is it?
Possible?
Yes.
It's in there.
No, but she says she has a letter of intent to present on the numbers. With where they're at in fundraising.
There's a letter of intent for $300,000.
They're not allocating a check today until they actually need it.
But if we're bonding without that money, there's incentive to follow through.
Thanks, Adinko.
There's your $300,000.
I don't.
So we need to pick a number, right?
Consensus. So, I mean, I think the first question is, how do we want to move forward with the adds and the deducts? That gets us a number and then our bid award, essentially.
So is anyone against removing the ultraviolet system?
No.
Okay, so that's off. And is anyone against, would you want to pick a number for the shade structure? Say leave in $30,000 for the pad? Assume it'll be around $30,000 and use contingency for the rest, right?
Right. Now, where's the budget number if we keep that shaded structure in there? Are we below the projected budget that the voters voted on?
Without the UV?
Without the UV?
Yes.
We are, so.
No.
No.
No, $60,000.
No, $62,000 or.
If we just remove the UVs.
Jesse, can you remind me again what the voters approved for us to have a budget for the pool?
So the voters approved $3.9 million.
$3.9?
Right. That was, and then the councils set the fundraising goal and then we got the grant. So in theory, you could bond up to $3.9 million.
So if we, without the UV, we go in there at 3.4 and change? We're still below what the citizens of Lewski wanted, correct?
We're, we're, sorry, this is so, I don't mean to be obnoxious about this. It's very semanticy. So they, the voters gave you authorization to bond up to $3.9 million. During the FY20 budget process, we had received word from the foundation that they thought they could meet the fundraising goal of $300,000. We had the idea of the grant, so we built into the FY20 budget a lower amount. That's the 3.445 million.
3.445.
And that's what the voters approved. You have authorization to bond for higher, but wait, the voters approved to be spent in FY20. in FY twenty, is that three point four, four, five million?
Okay. So where are we at with that shaded structure in there? Three point four, four, five?
Take the UV out first.
I don't have a calculator in front of me, so...
So UV is out, right? So that drops the construction cost to, that would be the, the award amount, three million.
So what would the total amount, bond amount be?
So it'd be three one one nine, right?
Still need to add the pool.
That's the bottom figure. Was three, three one one nine.
But you've got to add the Mirtha change order.
Large pool slide doesn't have the number. Oh, yeah, type the number, yeah.
And add it, no, add it in the large pool.
End slide.
Three, four, five, nine. Close.
Three, four, five, nine. So you're over five fifteen thousand.
Which, in the real world sense, that's not going to kind of make a difference, is it?
So if you take half of the cost of this shade structure out, you, you're in.
And we're lower than the budget.
Right, so if you take forty thousand out of the shade structure, you're, you're in, you're at forty, four, thirty-four nineteen.
What I want to get at, if, if we keep it in, is it going to impact that much more? What's the difference of the impact that people are going to feel? Is it going to be significant where, if we take the shaded structure out or we keep it in? Is what I want to know.
Yeah, so again, sorry to be nuanced about this.
That's okay.
This will not matter for what the taxpayers will feel in FY twenty. When we vote on the municipal budget, we vote for a total dollar amount to be raised, and then the grand list is set as of April first and we calculate the tax rate based on that. So we are raising the amount of, legally, we have to raise the amount we put in the FY twenty budget. The difference will be in future years, when if we've gone over budget, we have to make that up somewhere, or likely because we run small surpluses, it will just even out over the course of the year with something else we don't spend. In FY twenty-one, when we build the budget, the number you see in the CIP line for the pool debt service will go up, I don't know, a couple tens of thousands of dollars, based on what you saw in last year's CIP. And we'll have to have a conversation as, during FY twenty-one budget process of how we make that up. Sorry, I know it's really, I get so wonky about this.
I'd like to pull...
Sorry, Carolyn.
You know, it originally started at forty-two thousand dollars.
I know, so I don't understand. So maybe we pull it.
Shade structure, yeah.
What I'm worried about is it not getting done. But if it doesn't make an impact, voters wanted it, keep it in, but if it's going to make, I don't want to use the general fund for it.
Well, and again, I want to reiterate that there is a, a large group of residents that are very much supportive of this full picture, but there is another chunk of residents that said, I want you to replace the pool. I don't want you to spend three point nine million dollars.
So maybe we can just make do for one year, make a temporary shaded structure that's secure, just to accommodate some of the new families with babies, and then pull it to keep it down. And then we revisit it with the Myers Pool Foundation to see if we can get it done on a volunteer basis. It's my suggestion.
I don't see why we don't just remove half the cost of the shade structure, end it below our budget target, which was approved by voters as well. And so we're under budget.
Yep.
And we have a contingency that could end up providing the shade structure at the end. I have one question I did have on that. Solar remediation, any other big points at which you would see contingency fund being spent besides solar remediation?
No, and we did some testing during the first phase of engineering and did find, I mean, again, as you start digging, you never know, but at that point, the testing didn't show anything of huge concern or severity.
I mean, that seems like a, it's not conservative, but it's more conservative than we could be, and I still think it's good to go under budget, under what we requested in the budget, and have that money for reserves for other things or to buy that, buy down the tax rate in the next year.
Absolutely.
So that's where I would come down as taking out the UV and taking out forty thousand of the shade structure.
I agree.
So starting on board, Amy?
Yeah.
All right. So this gets us to our total bond amount. Do you want me to go in order of these items, Jesse?
Can we take a three-minute recess so we make sure we get the number correct?
Yeah, that's a great idea. I will call a three-minute recess. We will reconvene at seven thirty-two. We shall reconvene, the city council meeting, seven thirty-three here. Even though...
But what, how much? Okay, well, they're going to need that number.
All right.
Hi!
Hello. Are we comfortable now that we have the total bid and total bond numbers?
Yes. So, as a recap, for step one, the bid award, three thousand, forty-two thousand, five hundred.
Three million.
Three million.
Is that on record?
Yeah, right. So this is for the award to the contractor, so it doesn't include change orders, it doesn't include fundraising, any of that stuff. This is just, we're paying the contractor this amount of money to do this work. That includes, or I should say, it removes forty thousand, five hundred from the shade structure and the UV system entirely, twenty-two thousand. So that's three million, one oh five minus those two items. So that would be your step one bid. Step, and I'll just go through them and then you can do the process, so. And then step two would be a change order in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and one dollars for the Mirtha system and the larger pool, or the larger slide, the sixteen-foot slide. Step three would be the, the actual debt bond amount, which is three million, four hundred and seventeen thousand. So that includes the total construction cost with the change order, with the reductions, the five per, five percent contingency on construction, the engineering cost, so the ban that we took out previously, the two hundred thousand, plus the construction administrative work that we still have to do. GMP work that's required, the city will contract with GMP for bringing three-phase electrical to the building. And material testing, so like soil testing would be a contract for that work. City would have a separate contract. Minus the fundraising, three hundred thousand, and minus the land and conservation water grant, the hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred. Okay?
Excellent.
So I will leave these up here. So that, that highlight number, that's your step one sort of contract bid award.
So I would entertain a motion to approve awarding a construction contract to Russell Construction Services in the amount of three million, forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Mike, second by Hal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Slide it.
Next school now.
Just want to see the bottom favor.
Oh, sure, sorry.
So next up, I would entertain a motion to approve a change order for a Mirtha liner and slide in the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and one dollars.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Mike, second by Jim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Lastly, I would, oh, is this special language?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to...
Bond for...
To bond, bond for three million, four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the pool project.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Mike, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good job.
Just for the public here and for our knowledge, next steps are, on May eighth would be the actual bonding. What is the timeline then to start construction?
So just to clarify, May eighth is the, we submit our bond application to the bond bank. We do all of our bonding through the bond bank, which means that our project, along with municipal projects across the state, get lumped together, put out to the bond market. The actual bond closing will be sometime in July, and you will need to, to approve documents related to the execution of that official bond document in July. Meanwhile, so that's the bond timeline, the award and construction timeline, different timeline.
So next step for us is we would provide the notice to proceed to the general contractor. They would start procuring their insurance and bonds, but in that timeframe, we would probably have a general kickoff meeting. We talked about this day either next week or the week after, and that's when we'd get a schedule back from the contractor, you know, to start laying out what the, the full project construction is. So I would anticipate probably early June, we'd start seeing some activity from, from the GC over at the property.
Excellent, thank you. And always good to be reminded that we will have to again make an approval in this process.
Always an unbroken.
Right, thanks everyone for...
Thank you. Thank you for the Myers Pool Foundation.
Yes.
Can I now officially retire?
No, 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 no. You've got more work to do, Cindy.
Our next item on the agenda is discussion approval of O'Brien Center leases and fiscal outlook.
Thanks, John.
As if we haven't had enough math for tonight. We're going to get into a little bit more here. So the, the item tonight includes here, a summary that was sent via memo to folks. I do want to walk through that sort of for the benefit of folks listening at home and to just spur any opportunities for questions from council. And then included were also several lease, proposed leases that we're considering for the O'Brien Center, I should say, you're considering for the O'Brien Center. The two leases from the Vermont Performing Arts League and the one lease for the Howard Center are both at a point where we've had substantial legal review on both sides, feel really comfortable with the details at this point, barring some minor typo adjustments and minor changes. The Vermont Works for Women and Community Health Centers of Burlington both continue to be in legal review on the other side of the equation, and there are some pieces that have come up. So I, I think it's worthwhile tonight to discuss those, but we may want to look at tabling those for approval until the meeting on the twentieth. So I just want to put that out there that those are still out and pending final review on the other side of the equation from those potential tenants. So with that, I'm going to jump into this memo and kind of use that as a scaffolding to walk through. And again, as I'm going, if there are things that don't make sense or questions that come up, feel free to ask, and it may be worthwhile, too, to pause and sort of do some public questions also. So quickly, from a historical perspective, the O'Brien Center was opened as a community center in two thousand and eight. Prior to that, it had been vacant for a period of time and prior to that, had operated as a grocery store for a long time for the community. Long before that, it had been a furniture factory that actually burned down in a fabulous fire, which there are some crazy photos of here in the attic. The funding for that was a two-point-two million dollar bond that was approved in two thousand and seven, and then also there was a great deal of fundraising and community philanthropy that went into it, namely a large donation from the Tarrant Foundation that exceeded an initial reserve for the building. The way that the, and I say this with a context that none of the staff that are here now were here at the time that this was approved by, by council. The model that was presented to council, as we understand it, was that this building would cash flow and also be able to contribute to the general fund or to the city finances over time. Unfortunately, in the history of the building, that has never happened. We've never had a year where operating expenses have exceeded operating costs. There were several years on the books where the end balance looked positive, but most of that was insulated by portions of that initial reserve being contributed in that year. So it looked positive on the books, but that was actually not relative, not reflective of the operating difference. So long and short, it's been sort of a concern and an issue that's been out there for a long time. We've talked about it at this table for, for years now and have been trying to figure out a way to, to make the finances of this building work. One of the flags that was thrown most recently on that was through the audit process, the auditors asked us to move this from an enterprise fund into the general fund. For many years, it had been operated as an enterprise fund, but the auditors very wisely said, you know, this is not a fund that's self-sustaining. There's not really a clear picture in the next couple of years for this to get there, so we recommend bringing it into the general fund, which is something that we did for fiscal year nineteen. And Angela, you can throw things if I'm getting times or dates wrong or numbers. So here we are today. So that came into the budget for this year. As you can see in the memo that was presented here, this fiscal year, we've officially drawn down the reserve on the building that had previously existed. So we used that funding this year to offset that operating imbalance that's now carried by the general fund and, or I should say, a portion of that operating balance, not all of it was covered by the reserves. But essentially, that previous reserve is now gone. It's been dwindled down to, to zero. So that brings us to where we sort of are today. I guess one other couple... of are today. I guess one other, couple other pieces of history to just kind of layer in here. There are a few city programs and portions of the city budget that contribute to the O'Brien Center budget, or at least half traditionally. So the library has, since its moved there in two thousand twelve, I think it was, has paid in as a lease paying, or lease payer to the building, and that was primarily managed because of the enterprise fund. So a general fund program was paying into the enterprise fund. We've continued to carry that number forward, and now it's in the general fund as both a revenue item and an expense item for the lib, for the library and for the general fund revenue. And then the recreation and parks program budget, not the general fund budget, but the program budget, has also continued to pay essentially rent for the space where my team's offices are. So that's been about sixty-two hundred dollars a year. We've projected to carry that revenue amount into the next budget year and beyond with this model, but want to note that if all goes through here lease-wise, our team in July will be moving into a larger space in the building, but not paying on that space proportionally. So we'll essentially be getting a below-market rate value for city space in a city building. So I do just want to note that, that that's a way in which the building is in essence subsidizing some of the operations of the community services department. I'm gonna pause there and look at both of you and make sure I'm still on track, and then maybe say that's a good...
But can you do the Vermont Works for Women paragraph?
Okay, okay. That was, that's a complicated one, so I was gonna, yeah.
It's part of the, the historic financial picture, so I think it's important to understand.
Yeah, so the other joy of, of the building that Angela and I have been kind of wading through is that a lot of the leases that were made were very nuanced, and none of them quite looked exactly the same from the original leases that were drawn. So, one of the most notable concerns here is that Vermont Works for Women constructed their own space in two thousand eight at their own expense. At that time, there was an agreement made whereby the city would over time pay them back through a reduced rent amount for the original cost of that construction, which was about five hundred and fifty-three thousand, I believe. So, we've been giving them, they're paying rent on eight hundred and fifty square feet, when in actuality their space is twenty-three hundred and fifty square feet. So that delta of square footage and the subsequent rent amount is what every year has gone back to pay off that five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar debt. Needless to say, it's gonna take a while at that rate, so right now, in the packet is included a amortization schedule, which is reflective of that original agreement. At this point, that has a payoff date of twenty-fifty-one, I believe it is, which is obviously a ways out into the future. Again, that's a previous exist, previously existing agreement that was there when, when we kind of got into this, this dialogue. The challenge there is that if they choose to leave anytime before twenty-fifty-one, there is a payback amount that the city owes to that organization to cover the cost of that construction. So, again, you see that laid out in the, the table here. If, if Vermont Works decides to leave, you know, tomorrow, we owe them roughly four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. What's that?
Less the penalty.
Less the penalty, yes. And there is a penalty period that finishes in twenty-twenty-five, and that was sort of early on in the agreement to sort of disincentivize them from leaving. So, there had been a period of time where there was a twenty-five percent penalty. We're now into a ten percent penalty phase, and then in twenty-twenty-five, that penalty phase goes away, and we're on the hook for the full remaining amount. And then one other kind of just piece of, of history that's more recent, but I think worth note, is that February fourth, there was a letter of intent signed with Northend Studios that framed up sort of tentative agreements around a lease to that organization. The lease you see tonight has changed some between the letter of intent and now, but I just wanted to note that council on February fourth had approved that letter of intent to move forward in developing a lease with Northend Studios. So that's some history. And now I will pause and see if there's any questions.
I was just gonna mention, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I see in the upcoming budget is that the, the operations will pay for kind of level off finally? We won't be in the black anymore?
You want to knock all the wood? Yes, I mean, I think if we are fully leased at this juncture, the, the revenues, operating revenues will outpace the operating expenses. But as I noted here, there is not presently a capital plan for this building, and so any of those larger capital items are not included in operating. So roof replacement, HBC replacements, things of that nature, we're kind of working, John and I worked a bit to start to talk about how do we start to phase this into the capital plan for the city, and also are there opportunities to reinvest some of that operating revenue or overage into a seed fund for capital for the building? That's a decision council would have to make, to choose to allocate funds that way if there's a positive delta for revenues versus costs, but that is potentially something we could do. So we did model that on the spreadsheet here, but again, I want to just be really clear, that's a decision council would have to make. That's not something staff can just do.
And can you share some insight on why this building cannot pay for itself via rent?
Let me count the ways. Well, I think, I think one of the challenges is that we are attempting in the philosophical mission of the building to fill it with service agencies, most of whom are nonprofits and working on pretty fixed incomes, often of soft money. And so, I think that we didn't have a ton of opportunity to crank up the rent and have the mission of the building fulfilled. So, you know, I'll speak for myself in saying that's been a really big piece of my approach to this building, is to really try to stay true to that operational and service mission that was really at the heart of why the building was put together. The other challenge is that as a municipally-run building, if we start leasing that to for-profit entities, there are tax implications as well for us. So right now, because our tenants are all nonprofits, it's a, it's a lessened tax burden on us versus if we started renting spaces to for-profit entities, that would change. So there would be a negative impact there.
It's regards to the debt. With the building being full of nonprofits, it's eligible for tax exempt financing. If we started moving to for-profit tenants, we would not be able to take advantage of that tax exemption, and the interest rate would be much, much higher.
Thank you. And I think too, you know, the other piece that, and I think this is endemic sort of across infrastructure of the city, so this is not specific to the O'Brien Center, but I think as with the pool, there wasn't a long-term plan for, for capital improvements. And so, as with many of our projects now that you're seeing, we're playing a lot of catch-up on, on many years of deferred maintenance and, and lack of planning. So, although we're only ten years into this building, it's a busy place, it's a big facility, it's a complicated building, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, and some of that has not always been as well-maintained as it could have been or should have been. So I think that's another piece that, operationally, we've really cut corners and tried to really be shrewd and frugal with our operating budgets, but we want to start to be planful and not find ourselves in twenty years having a major crisis on our hands where all the systems are falling apart because we haven't done the right thing. So, and we've had vacancies. I mean, that's the other honest piece of the last really two years. With the YMCA leaving, that's a huge chunk of our building that has been vacant, and we definitely have struggled to find a, a good fit up until this point for the building. I do feel like we were at a really good spot tonight, and I'm excited about the slate we're presenting, but we don't carry, we don't carry a contingency for vacancy in our budget, which I think for a lot of commercial brokers, that's probably how they build their budgets. So that's not something we've done. If that's a good question.
And I think just to add slightly to that, I think, you know, if you look at this chart Ray and Angela put together beginning of the memo about the fiscal years and the revenues expenditures and reserves used, when we think back historically, and again, correct me on dates, you know, the YMCA closed two years ago, and we've been carrying a vacancy. We've been losing money essentially on that space for that period of time. In two thousand fifteen or sixteen, the teen center space closed, which was, is a difficult space to lease up in, by itself. And so we've been covering that vacancy for many years. So if you look at what the year-end reserve balance was, I think some really innovative things were attempted on that space using, you know, the teen center space partnership with the Y, et cetera. And, you know, kudos to the community to trying, to, for trying something very progressive that didn't work, and now we're readjusting. You know, if those things had worked and we had this remaining reserve balance, you know, quarter million remaining reserve balance sitting there, we could be keeping up with this capital, these capital needs and investing back into the building, and the building would be self-sustaining. But because those, those trials weren't, didn't work, we've seen the erosion of that reserves. I think one of the benefits you'll see on the slate of leases that we've put together is we've really trusted partners that we believe can carry forward through the next three to five to ten years. So we're trying to build back out of those, those vacancies and have people who have demonstrated abilities to lease up space for community uses, as Ray said, and really be kind of that vibrant community center. So we're trying to build back out of this hole that's been created for a couple of years. And there are, and I just, in the interest of full transparency, there are still some huge risks associated with this plan. You know, this isn't budgeting in any vacancy, any vacancy revenues. This isn't building in any capital revenues. This is assuming Vermont Works not only stays but remains in business. There are some, there are still some pretty big risks associated with this model.
Another question about that, how is the relationship with Vermont Works and the city? Is it a good relationship?
It's strong, yeah.
Strong?
Yeah.
So there's no worry about them saying, see ya?
I mean, not, not on account of our relationship with them. I think, you know, as any nonprofit agency that's funded on grants and soft money, it's...
So it's solid.
It's, they're a strong organization though, with good leadership. They've been here for a long time. You know, I think they're solid, as much as a nonprofit can be solid.
The other question I have, is there a percentage of space that you could lease to a profitable, like a non-monprofit? A what?
A for-profit.
A for-profit.
For-profit, yeah. Before those, before those tax changes.
The, the cutoff test is ten percent of your revenues can come from a for-profit source.
Ten percent?
Ten percent of your revenues. So if your for-profit entity is paying a higher rate than what we're charging nonprofits, that could skew the amount of space. It's gonna make it less.
So we're not going down that road?
Not at this point.
We tried.
We tried. I mean, we did look at a few for-profit entities when we were shopping the space through a commercial broker, and for, for a variety of reasons, they just didn't stick. And again, that prevented us from having to deal with the, the issue of the tax piece and the financing piece, but we did look at it as an option.
So, can I ask a question about the payments from Parks and Rec staff and the library? I, I understand they made sense in the enterprise fund world, but now that it's in the general fund, I'm just looking at the model, and so you would project a five-thousand-dollar surplus in FY twenty-one, but you would be paying thirty-two thousand dollars in the general fund for space. So how do you see, is there a purpose at this point to maintain those as budget lines that the library owes to the OCC when it's all within the general fund? And then, so, because the way it looks is basically the city is gonna be funding the positive balance and maybe the accumulation of a reserve fund through payments from the library and the Parks and Rec Fund.
So I'll defer the, the general fund question to Angela.
Angela, can you just come on? You should just learn this lesson.
So the library could pretty easily be removed as an expense and a revenue and be neutral to its impact on the general fund. It would make the O'Brien Community Center, if you were just looking at revenues, less expenses specifically for that center, be in a deficit, because there would be the large amount of space. It's a whole unit that would be no revenues. The other side, which is the staff space, is coming from a special revenue fund, which we are trying to obtain through grants and program fees, which we are not necessarily doing successfully.
So I think part of the, the deficit that Alex had called out earlier for community service programs budgets is partially driven by this sixty-one-hundred dollars, that we don't have a dedicated revenue stream to offset. So we're trying to cover that on the backs of program fees, grants, donations, et cetera. So, and to date, we've not had success to do that. So, that's one that I certainly am hopeful we can have a conversation about in the future, but I think for the time being, we're budgeted for, for fiscal year twenty, we're expecting that. I think we'll, we'll work with that and then reevaluate as time goes on.
If the Fund Four Hundred, the special revenue fund rents were removed from coming into the general fund, it would be a very small increase that wouldn't have to be raised by another revenue source, taxes, or another potentially identified place. It's only about sixty-six-hundred dollars, sixty-five-hundred dollars a year?
So I think the, the values question for the council to answer your question, and, and to foreshadow a question that you're going to have to look at during the budget process, is to what extent do you want taxpayers subsidizing the operation of the OCC in general and the community services department in general? If you take out the expenditures that are coming through the program areas, the taxpayers are subsidizing it, or the taxpayers are subsidizing it if we're not raising the money through other fees and revenue streams. So that's the value conversation for you all to have. I want to interject one more element into this that's not covered in Ray's memo, but is history on the site. So the previous council executed a, what's, what we called a pre-development agreement with Champlain Housing Trust to look at doing a homeownership affordable housing project on the front of the OCC space in the, the, what would it be, the west corner of the parking lot. One could look at that project as a mini TIF, if you will, and think about the new tax increment that we would get through developing the front of that parcel as dollars that were subsidizing the operation of the unit as a whole. So if that project moves forward and we develop affordable housing at the front of it, likely what we would do is subdivide out a corner of that parking lot, transfer the ownership to Champlain Housing Trust. They would pay a property tax bill, and that, that new rev, that new property tax revenue could be looked at as a way to build up this fund over time. It would, it's an accounting trick. It's not a, it's not a TIF anything, but it's a way to generate more revenue from that part, parcel of land in the city. Does that make sense?
But we're already paying property taxes on the OCC, but there would be a different property tax rate applied to the...
There would be another development there that would have additional property taxes rather than just being parking lot.
And in a similar vein, where the, the library is kind of being subsidized in the building, were it not there, we would be paying rent in a third-party space, I assume?
Probably were when it was previously located in the Champlain Mill. The rent line was just left and repurposed.
So, the overall subsidy then for the building right now is around twenty-six thousand dollars coming from the library, essentially, because you could zero that line out because we are owning the space, or paying down the space, and then putting that money towards, balancing the books for OCC. Excepting that if we moved the library, we could also potentially have rental income on that space that would then offset. We, our net budget would be the same, but the OCC would show up as a different, as being revenue neutral, whereas now it's kind of subsidized. That's how it's seeming to me, but not that, I, I think from the values perspective that you say, Jesse, I think it's a fairly small fee to pay for the amount of stuff that happens in the OCC. So I actually think that it's a, it's not a bad thing, but that's just kind of, I'm just trying to run my head around that piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's lots of moving parts.
So, do we want to walk through the specific leases that are proposed? Would that be helpful?
So, yeah, and the, it should be noted, the, the spreadsheet that came through that models out through fiscal year twenty-five is based on the leases as proposed. So if there are adjustments recommended or things change on the financial side, that would affect that model. But I will say at this point, from a financial perspective at least, the, the operating conversation has been pretty, pretty stable and solid and all, even in parties where there's pending legal review. So, I feel pretty good about these numbers, but I just, I do recall that out, that that's, until things are signed, none of those numbers are cast in stone. So just to walk through this spreadsheet, or this table here pretty quickly, UVM Medical Center, they're solid and current with a lease that goes through twenty-twenty-three with two five-year renewal options. That's for the majority of the former YMCA space. The Howard Center Therapy Suite is proposing to remain stable, same space... The Howard Center Therapy Suite is proposing to remain stable, same space, same footprint, with some updated terms. The Winuski Family Center is actually proposing to fully extract from the O'Brien Community Center and relocate their services at their Elm Street space. So, we're actually not carrying a lease forward with them past June 30th at this point. And that's the space that, as we're proposing it, my team and the community justice team will move into in mid-June to early July. So, a little bit bigger footprint for, for our team, which I think would be a good thing. Vermont Performing Arts League, which I think everyone knows more as North End Studios. Ben and April are here representing them, but we had, as mentioned, a sign letter of intent and have done some renegotiations since that point to include an additional space, or propose to include an additional space, and also have drafted a separate lease with them for one year for the kitchen. The kitchen has proved to be a really difficult space for us to find a take or for. And so, we're gonna take a flyer on a one-year term, or propose to take a flyer on a one-year term at a pretty reduced rate because we feel like that amenity will greatly enhance the work that North End Studios is doing in other spaces. So, I think that will be of note to consider. Community Health Centers of Burlington, they, a year and a half ago at this point, bought out Winuski Family Health. So, same providers there, they're partnered with Vermont Dental Care, but what used to be a split lease between two entities is now a single lease with Community Health Centers of Burlington, and they manage Vermont Dental Care as a sub-time. So, that's been a nice change. You know, the patient and client on the front end doesn't see that, but for us as a landlord, it's been much, much easier. Vermont Works for Women, as we mentioned, so the lease...
Sorry, can I inter, so, side note anecdote. Community Health Centers of Burlington and Vermont Dental Care are a very solid tenant. They've been there, nothing really is changing. Well, there's a small payback thing that's changing that we'll get to in the reserve conversation. This is an enormously good service for our community. They are wonderful healthcare providers and being co-located, medical care and dental care. They can self-refer back and forth. The clients know kind of one-stop shopping for more comprehensive care. Really wonderful, community-minded providers. If you ever have the opportunity to just go in and say hi to them, they're a really great team. So, I think it is a huge community resource to have that service delivery right there. And when we think about, you know, when Ray and Angela and I have kind of gone through the permutations of like, well, should we recommend offloading this site? Should we, having this community service central to our community, close to residents, if we would to, we were to just put the property up for redevelopment and lose that community resource, it would be detrimental to our community. When you think of, from a good like urban planning perspective, that's the exact location you would want to place a combined medical and dental office. So, just my own personal little commentary there, it's a really wonderful community asset.
There is mention here of HVAC negotiations, which we will get into as we get into the specifics of that lease. Vermont Works for Women, again, we discussed proposing to renew with some slightly adjusted terms there. And then the Winuski Prevention Partnership, so they currently share office space with my team and what we are proposing is that they would become a sub-tenant of North End Studios in one of the spaces that they would be leasing. So, the city would no longer have a lease relationship with the Winuski Prevention Partnership, but they would likely remain in the building and continue to operate in the O'Brien Center just as a sub-tenant of a lessee of ours. And then the library and community services staff, as we mentioned, are also called out here in the table. So, that's the sort of current slash proposed future state. And there is worth note here at the end, just one other piece that because presently we have on our city ordinancees fees related to rentals of public space, which we will no longer be managing, we will need to do an ordinance adjustment to basically strike those fees from the city ordinance, from Chapter 28 of the fee ordinance. So, we plan to come back on the 20th. I think there's some other, potentially some other fees that, in other parts of the city that we're gonna be looked at for that meeting. So, we will be back to discuss that at that point, and those would go into effect with the new leases in July. So, I think that's all the background and whatnot. And again, there's a spreadsheet here that sort of highlights the modeling that Angela was really responsible for in her Excel wizardry. But looking out to fiscal year '25, again, we really start to see the building cash flowing in a positive way in fiscal year '20, but in a more substantial way as we get further and further out. Debt service comes down and there's escalators built into the leases, which is also a new feature for our leases, a guaranteed escalator. So, that's actually a really helpful feature as well that hadn't been there before.
Right, can I stop you for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
The space you're taking over, what's gonna happen in the space that you're vacating?
That has been, so when I mentioned earlier that there has had been an adjustment to the North End Studios proposal, they are proposing to take that space on.
They're gonna take that space over. So, what about the Winuski or the Prevention Space?
So, they would let, well, I don't want to speak for North End, but they would likely remain in that space as a sub-tenant of North End Studios.
Okay, that's, thank you.
I'm not gonna get into the interior decorating conversations that go on there, but they'll be in that space in some way, shape, or form. All right. So, I'm gonna pause on history before we dive into the specific leases.
I'm trying to remember if there's anything else to...
That's a lot of information.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I would say that the council discussions that I participated in before on this topic have been, this building doesn't really financially work the way you would want it to, but there's been a commitment thus far to it being a community space. And during the budget setting, as Jesse was discussing, like deciding to go ahead and subsidize that. I think that's probably the continuing, the thing that will happen every year.
Yeah, to a point, because even at 2025, that library, you know, revenue is more or less equal to the overages. So, to that point, there's still somewhat of a subsidy going on there.
Right, and then when we get into like a capital improvement need, where that would be funded by?
Correct, correct.
The other thing I would share is we had a pretty, pretty dicey discussion last year around the vacancies about potentially having to abandon the mission because it was getting so bad. So, we're really happy to have this new setup and all the work that you've put in and founding a partner that, you know, can really keep that mission going forward.
Yeah. Yeah, it definitely feels like a good, a good philosophical fit. So, I think if, it's an okay point to jump into that lease. Since Ben and April are here, and I'm guessing it may be approaching, they've passed their bedtime. I wanted to, to just introduce Ben Burstein and April Warner from North End Studios. I've been working a lot with them over the last couple of months to get from that letter, well, to the letter of intent, and then from the letter of intent to, to this point where we have a lease to share. Again, changes that have kind of manifested since the letter of intent primarily are an adjustment to the square footage, so the addition of that, I believe it's 473 additional square feet of that office space that's presently my team and the Prevention Partnership. So, we've adjusted the lease accordingly and the rates accordingly. The lease was developed by our legal counsel, so this has been reviewed and approved by the legal counsel on both sides. You know, I think one, one nuance to call out here that is a little bit unconventional from a, a term perspective is that there's sort of a, I guess it's a two-year bailout option within the first five-year term. And I think that's there largely because this is a new business model within the building. And there was some question about, you know, we're, we're taking a bit of a gamble on flyer here to figure out how this will work, their business model will work here. So, there's an option with 180-day notice that this five-year term, initial five-year term could be truncated to a two-year term. I want to say clearly, I do not in any way hope that happens. I don't think it's going to happen. I think we're gonna be gangbusters down there, but I do want to call that out because it's not a straight 5-5-5, whereas most of the other leases are. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's sort of the one interesting wrinkle to this lease. Otherwise, I will say thankfully, it's a fairly straightforward arrangement. I guess I should mention the alcohol piece as well. So, that part of the business model for Ben and April is running public events, weddings, funeral receptions, public meetings, et cetera. Some of those do have a desire to have alcohol available to them. And so, we have set up language within here that we've reviewed with them, reviewed with DLC, reviewed with legal counsel, that basically requires them, if alcohol will be served, to meet all state and local regulations around the provision of alcohol. So, it, it doesn't spell out with a lot of detail what that is, but that's by design so that it can be referential to other existing ordinance in law.
And, and the reason it's important for you, for us to call it out to you all is we have a municipal ordinance in place that prohibits alcohol consumption in public buildings. So, this was a way for us to allow you to approve the exception to that municipal ordinance for the, for the sole purpose of this agreement. It's also allowed when you approve permits, like when you approve Winuski Wednesday permits for use of the rotary, we call that out there for, and assured DLC compliance, which is a law, a mirror of what we're doing in this agreement. The mayor runs these meetings.
The reason this comes up at all is because of the populations we serve, where consumption of alcohol is part of their culture in virtually every form of public gathering. A concept of a meeting for the Convalies, for instance, consists of a meal with, you know, wine and discussion and so on. So, it's really a public gathering. Everything is based around, it's, everything's social, meetings of all kinds. And when they come to us and we say, "What are you doing?" And they say, "Oh, we're having a meeting." And we know exactly what that means. But again, it's still a thousand years of culture and that's what they do.
Thank you for the context.
Yeah, are we invited to these meetings?
And that's another thing, people always ask about that. If you're in the village, you're invited to whatever level this thing is, a wedding, you know, whatever. Everybody, yes, everyone, we had one last night, which I got out in the morning, which was theoretically a baptism, but it turned into a birthday party and somebody else's, you know, whatever it was, it was just everybody was there. It was a big social event.
I do believe that they would consider it, that they would be, they were being honored by the fact that any of you would, would say, "I would like to come, is that okay?" They would think that was the greatest thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, would you like to take these sort of one at a time, like we'll review this lease, give approval, and move to the next? Is that what?
I think that might make the most sense of the structure. And again, I think, just note again, that Vermont Works and Community Health Centers will, you can discuss at table for approval till the next meeting.
So, it's really those, the first three?
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council about this first lease?
I had this one on the, and I don't know if this is standard or not, on the landlord reserves a right to modify parking in that. And then, but it doesn't include anything about entryways, walkways. Like, there's whole things that, whole set of things that landlord will provide access in common to, but then only reserves rights to modify the parking. So, I'm wondering what the logic was to not include, like entryways, what if you need to reconfigure the driveway?
Sure. It's a good question. We had talked, the parking piece was mostly related to, actually, the CHT agreement and potential future development of the property. So, we wanted to keep flexibility to say, "We're gonna provide parking, but that may not be the same, you know, number X of parking spaces that we have today as in the future if we do develop part of the lot." So, that was the reason that language was, was put in there. That was crafted by our attorney to kind of cover us for that. So, but it's a good question in terms of entryways, walkways, et cetera, whether we would want to call those out or not.
Yeah, I, I think we haven't anticipated a big realignment. I think with any redevelopment that would happen either at the front of the lot or even in the entryway of the building, we would do that in conjunction with the tenants. You know, we've, we've talked with all of the tenants about the CHT project during the city hall, discussion about moving city hall and the police department to the other side of the front of the site. That was done in conjunction with the other tenants who were there at the time. So, I think that any, any changes that would need to be made as in accordance with either of those redevelopments would be done kind of off-lease, if you will. But the parking, because it's a, as we have seen recently, parking becomes a very big issue when it is either codified or not codified. So, we wanted to call that out very specifically because it can be considered a land right.
Yeah, we did include that clause, or that phrase in all the proposed leases.
Any other questions? Questions from the public? So, I would entertain a motion to approve the lease for Vermont Performing Arts League, DBA North End Studios, the event studio space at O'Brien Center?
And, and if you can, sorry, just add to the motion, authorize me to execute it.
And authorize city manager Jesse Baker to execute said lease. Can, can I just get you to redo it?
Subpo.
Second.
Motion by House, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and then the second lease for consideration with North End Studios is for the kitchen. And I'm just scrolling down to that. So, one-year lease, again, I think we're really viewing this as a bit of a pilot to see how this approach will work of kind of reinvigorating the community kitchen approach, which is sort of how that kitchen was initially visioned. One of the nice pieces here is that whereas my team doesn't have staff capacity to manage that use, that's something that North End Studios is presently doing at the North End Community Center in Burlington and has experience with. So, you know, I think we're acknowledging here that we're, we're giving a really cut rate, but it's also worth noting, if you look at the model, after, after this first year, the lease rate comes out of the revenue and is replaced by a rental rate. So, we were modeling a rental, if we were to rent the facility, a rental revenue of just over $2,000 a year. So, actually, this lease arrangement puts us in a better position than we had originally been modeling. And again, I think we're gonna look at this after a year and reevaluate how things are going. You know, I think if, again, if the kitchen's busy every night and it's, you know, super positive, then I think we have some ability to renegotiate those terms next year when we come back to the table. So, it's kind of a, something is better than nothing. And again, I think invigorating a space that's been pretty empty since Vermont Works scaled back is really a positive thing for the building, so.
Yeah, I would say, it sounds like you described in both of these leases some small concessions that aren't standard, but it gets us a good tenant when we have really struggled on that.
Yep. And again, the alcohol clause is included here, again, just to call that out.
Any additional questions on this lease? So, I would entertain a motion to approve the O'Brien Center lease for Vermont Performing Arts League, DBA North End Studios, of the commercial kitchen space, and authorize city manager Jesse Baker to execute said lease.
Subpo. Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Mike. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome to Winuski.
Yes. It's official. Wait, well, wait, once they're signed.
Quickly, we will do the best we can. And, you know, people have, ever since we've started talking about this, there's been interest on the kitchen piece. It's a little nevotism, but it's my son-in-law, you know. But he's a restaurant manager and a cook, and he, he has some developmental projects he wants to start. He was looking for, he came down last night once. So, we may be able to, I mean, all of these things. We're hoping to surprise you with the level of revenue we can pull in for this, for the whole thing.
And we're also really expecting you to be our partners in this, as Ray has, has been throughout the process. Yes, we want, we want to serve the people of Winuski. We want to do the things that we already have figured out how to do on other people's. You know, we let other places be the guinea pigs, now we really don't. So, yeah, we just think also some great things can happen there. So, yeah, we just think also it's a great things can happen there. Thank you so much.
Well, good luck.
Thank you. Alright.
Right, so the next, um, next lease here is from the Howard Center. So, this is for their child, parent-child therapy space, the suite that they constructed there a number of years back. Fairly straightforward, so again, the, the term and the options to renew, um, it's a one-year term with two two-year options to renew. That's, by their account, fairly standard for their leases, again, being a nonprofit organization that's funded largely by grants. It gives them some flexibility if their funding landscape changes. So, it's, you know, I think a risk that needs to be called out, but also they've been a really strong partner, really solid. They've been in that space for a number of years. So, I feel like it's not a flaming risk, but it is a risk that, again, I think we wanna call out there. And the other thing that I do just wanna note, we did hear back from them, um, just this morning on, from a secondary legal review of the document. So, in the option to renew term, they requested reducing the notice from 180 days to 90 days, which is actually what had been in their lease prior. It's a three-month notice versus a six-month notice. So, um, I just wanted to call that out. That's, that's something that I think we have a comfort level with. It's been modeled in other leases in the past, but just is different than what's on paper here and just came back to us this morning. But other than a couple missed parentheses and spelling errors, no other substantive changes in their legal review.
So, you're attempting to move it to a better scenario for us, maybe best practice, but this reflects, what they're requesting reflects what they're used to?
Yep, and I, and they indicated, again, I, I don't think they're gonna commit to it, but they indicated they'd like to use this as a bridge to get to some longer, more stable periods of time. This, this current program is a grant-funded program, so there's a window, you know, finite window for that program, but it's also been really well received and, and quite busy, I see. I'm now across the hall from that and it's, it's hopping in there. So, um, I think we're, we're in a good spot with that.
Any questions from council? Nothing from the public? I would entertain a motion to approve the O'Brien Center lease for Howard Center, Inc., for the parent-child interactive therapy suite, and authorize city manager Jesse Baker to execute said lease.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by House, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And did you want to table the other two for the next meeting?
Yep.
Alright, so we've moved to our final item on the agenda, which is request for use of reserves for O'Brien Center HVAC updates.
So, John's gonna come to join us, we'll squeeze him up here. But, um, so, in working with the Community Health Centers of Burlington towards a lease renewal, one of the pieces that's been a real negotiation point is that they were an occupant of the building prior to the city owning the building. So, they actually did the fit-up work on the, on the structure when Palmero still was the landlord, including adding in the HVAC system at the time. Here we are now, 10, 12 years into that HVAC system, and it's, it's started to show some signs of, of wear. So, that really instigated for us a need to look at our HVAC systems throughout the building, so not only within the Community Health Center side, but within the broader kind of core suite of the building where these leases are. And what we brought back tonight is a proposal to make some adjustments and improvements to that system to, to help it function better. Certainly, the health center piece is, is a pretty strong need. Again, to Jesse's point, it's a really important facility partner, and I think having that internal climate managed properly is a big deal. And then on the other side of the building too, we had a lot of, um, just ongoing tiki-tack challenges with temperature set points and things turning on and off and valves and, um.
Lot of maintenance calls.
Lot of maintenance calls, that's a good way to say it. I know more about HVAC systems now than I ever did. So, anyway, John has been great. We've been working with Alliance, who's been doing the preventive maintenance there, to put together a proposal for those improvements. And that's what's in front of you tonight for consideration as a use of reserves.
And perhaps I misread. I thought a portion of this money was being recuperated.
Yes, thank you. So, within the, uh, proposed finances for the Community Health Centers of Burlington lease, there's a five, five-year payback on a portion of the cost that would be specific to their building. So, there's 24,000, I believe, 26,000 that's, um, specific to the valves and, um, kind of tubage of the system. And then there's a controls piece that will actually serve the entire building, and that's gonna be split out proportionally based on.
Square footage.
Square footage. So, those two expenses will be paid back over the five-year term of the lease, and then that higher lease cost will carry forward. And that'll help us start to provide, um, some insulation for prevent, preventive maintenance and then future costs for the system. So, that's been something we've been working to negotiate with them.
So, technically, from an accounting perspective, how this works is we are requesting the entire amount to be taken from our current fund balance. And then, over the five years, that higher CHCB payment to the OCC, or which is in the general fund, will essentially pay back that reserve fund use. It may not go to the reserve fund, it will just reduce the subsidy, um, from the taxpayers.
Thank you, Christine.
And how much was it? It's 72 total, what's the portion that's getting recuperated?
Yeah, so there's, there's three items. So, the, the Community Health Center of Burlington and Vermont Dental Center sort of controls upgrade is 26,890.
Okay.
And then there's a portion that's shared between city-owned OCC space and the, um, CHCB, 6,990. I believe it's like 20, uh, 20-something percent of that is, is dedicated to them in that five-year recoup.
Okay.
So, is this working out the current system and adding, putting out a whole new system?
No, so I, I'll give you a quick overview. So, just to give you some background, when, when I came in, we looked, we started looking at the HVAC system, um, on, on our side, on the city-owned side, and realized that we really need to get a preventive maintenance plan, um, moving forward. So, we, we had Alliance come in, start that preventive maintenance, and then we shortly realized we really, really need to look at, um, kind of the control systems down there, 'cause they were a bit antiquated. So, um, Ray has, uh, contact and we reached out to Efficiency Vermont to help fund that. So, there's no city money towards, towards that project. So, Alliance came in, they did a, a controls analysis for the city portion and the, um, the new sort of HVAC leased portion, the Vermont Dental side. What they found was the actual equipment was in pretty good shape. It's really, the controls are really antiquated, and that's what was causing a lot of the comfort issues. So, this work is really just upgrading those controls to more modern controls to provide better comfort, um, for the existing system.
Thinking, it's only 10, 12 years old, it shouldn't be bad now. I mean, and what, if you're gonna move forth, what kind of equipment are you gonna use from here on out? Because I think we learned maintenance is a key issue on stuff like this. And technology, we should, we need to get proven technology that will work, so it doesn't cost the city more money. 10, 12 years isn't really that old.
Yeah, so HVAC, like the actual mechanical pieces, I mean, you, with preventive maintenance, it should be lasting 20 years at least. And, I mean, controls are a little bit trickier 'cause they're electronics, so, you know, 10 years, 15 years is, 15 years would be a good sort of lifespan for those. But, yeah, we would, we have to bid this project out 'cause it, it's over the thresholds. So, we would have to bid it around, you know, your typical, like Johnson controls, Honeywell systems, your, your kind of, there's a few major players out there, I guess I could say, that, that we would bid this around.
Proven technology.
Yep.
Is there any potential savings from, from the efficiency improvements?
Potentially. I think in working with Efficiency Vermont, it, because of altered runtime, so because the building's been vacant in most cases, there's not a great baseline to compare previous use to, to future use. So, we're hoping and expecting that with folks coming into the building, it's gonna be a lot busier, a lot more time when the lights are on, when they, you know, air conditioning's blowing. So, I think we will definitely see some efficiencies, but it may not manifest in a, like, savings of dollars. You know, if we had a baseline to, to future use that was the same, then I think we would. But based on what Efficiency Vermont projected, it's not a huge, huge savings. There will be some, but it's actually not a, a super inefficient building, which is nice. It actually is, is pretty well put together and there've been some improvements made around, um, the efficiency of the, just the air tightness of the building. So, yeah, not a, not a ton of room to go up.
And we are talking about taking the $72,000 out of a balance of $456,000. Unassigned, so we haven't pre-allocated anything else to that total.
No, not yet.
And again, this goes back to my comment during the treasurer's report of this include, this is the reserve balance at the end of FY 18. So.
That doesn't take into account the projected surplus from the current year.
Right, so it would be, it would leave us with $384,000 currently in our reserve balance. And then you think about potentially at the end of this year, post-audit, adding another 90 to 100,000 onto that. So, trying to keep, you know, thinking about, again, what's that value conversation about what's a healthy savings account to hold for things like this as they come up.
And so, the city wants to pay the whole tab and not the people renting the spaces, correct? And this is how we're gonna get them into our space to rent?
So, the Community Health Center of Burlington folks who have service kind of exclusive to their leased space will be paying back that cost over five years.
Over five years.
For the suite where there will be North End Studios, Howard Center, MyStaff, um, UVM Medical, that's not being added on to the leases, um, but we are using those revenues to cover preventive maintenance costs. So, we didn't scale up those lease, you know, per square foot dollar amounts to account for this expense in that core suite, whereas we did with the Community Health Centers of Burlington. And the primary reason is that that isn't a system that we had owned before. So, that's a new burden for us from a systems perspective in the Community Health Center space. To date, they've been doing all the maintenance, all the preventive maintenance, that's been their equipment that they've been paying for. So, that's a new asset that we're taking on responsibility for. Whereas in the other space, we have owned it and will own it, own it into the future. So, it didn't feel right to, to add that on as an additional cost, um, kind of one-time cost.
Sounds pretty generous to the city, in my opinion. I, I work in fit-ups all the time and I don't see a landlord doing that. So, I'm just wondering.
I, I think this goes back to what was framed previously, that there is no capital improvement or reserve funding for this building. So, doing this work is gonna be decisions of taking it out of the general fund and subsidizing the building further. On, on that note though, if we are taking ownership over this system, should there potentially be more than just the payback increase? Because now they've lost having to maintain that themselves.
So, they are considered more likely than not to renew for the additional five-year period, and they will continue to pay the repayment schedule for those additional five years. So, we will recoup the cost of the system twice. And we think that that is more than enough to cover the preventative maintenance over the 10-year period in addition to refunding us the cost of the installation.
Okay. Other questions or consents from council? Public comment? I, well, if there's no more questions, then. I would entertain a motion to approve request for use of reserves for O'Brien Center HVAC updates in the $72,000. Motion by Jim, second by Amy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we are ready to adjourn. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Amy, second by Jim, all those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned.